Call the meeting to order, and if we could all please rise, Councilmember Rob Donavich is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Donavich. Good evening and welcome to the July 12, 2021 study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,925th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, July 26, 2021. We have all members of the council with us this evening. I do not have any announcements to make. Does anyone else on the council have any announcements to make? All right, with that, we go to audience communication. We set aside half an hour at the beginning of the meeting. If anyone would like to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed with the meeting. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting agenda of Monday, July 26, 2021, where they will officially be voted on. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach one of the podiums at either side of the room when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium and you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let those watching the meeting and the council members know who is speaking to them. And with that, we will go to Chief Cade, who's going to make a little presentation before we start our new business. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. I just wanted to take a moment before your meeting to introduce our newest addition to the City of Livonia, Livonia Police Department through Hagera. This is Caitlin Witt. And you may recall, some months ago, the presentations that were made before council requesting your authority and approval to begin a new program at the Livonia Police Department to embed a clinician, social worker, into the police department to help serve this community. And through that process, months of vetting and working through the contract process with Hagera and vetting candidates, I'm pleased to introduce to you Caitlin. She has 10 years of experience in this field, including working at St. Mary's, which is going to be very beneficial for us, being one of the hubs that and cope in serving, again, our community with people that are in distress or in a crisis situation. And I'll just add as well that, you know, we focus quite a bit about the mental health crisis, and we've seen a lot of really national news on that that communities, including Livonia, have experienced. But this program is above that as well, is, you know, regardless of really social situations that are really not law enforcement related, the police will play a limited role. But having the resources of Ms. Witt and her resources as well to help address a variety of situations is going to be, in my view, very, very positive for our community. And I'm very excited for, to kick off the program. She'll be starting in a couple of months. And I know that she is quite excited about the opportunity as well, and I'll just turn the podium over to her. I told her she's only got a half hour or so. She brought a PowerPoint presentation. I said, well, that's not going to work, so.
Caitlin?
I didn't really prepare a speech, but, you know, I am very excited about this. I think it's really needed in our community. I'm a Livonia resident. I grew up in Livonia for 28 years, and I'm very passionate about working in mental health. I have a variety of experience working in mental health, from inpatient, as you said, working at St. Mary's. I've worked at Havenwick. I've worked outpatient. I've also worked within the community. There is, I will always work in mental health. It is a huge passion of mine, and I really, it is really an honor to be able to be kind of the first mental health clinician to work aside law enforcement and strengthen the partnership between law enforcement and mental health.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, probably on behalf of every council member here, welcome.
Thank you.
The innovation and the trailblazing that we are taking this step, and to have you here today to be starting is nothing short of extraordinary. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm very excited.
And especially someone that's been in the community as long as you have, to be able to do this is wonderful. So, welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Donavich?
Thank you, Madam President. Chief Cade in the Livonia Police Department, some of the most professional and well-trained officers in the state. I'm really fortunate, and I know we're all fortunate to say that Livonia cops protect us every single day. So to have this new program coming to our city, it's only going to strengthen what services our department can offer our community. I'm looking forward to this program being successful and to you being safe. And I know Livonia cops are going to work really hard to answer the call for service from residency help. I know that you being alongside of them and maybe one of your colleagues in the future, I know that you can do a good job and take care of the residents that are really struggling in that time of need. So, welcome to Livonia.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Caitlin. Welcome, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Council.
All right, with that, we go to our new business. Beginning with item number one, a block party. This comes to us from Maggie McGrane to be held Saturday, August 21, 2021, from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Rayburn Street between Levan and Williams with no rain date requested. Is Ms. McGrane here with us this evening?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember.
I'll offer an approving for the regular in hopes that we can make contact with this individual who's requesting this. And I'm, through nobody's fault, but I'm noticing that we're getting, not often, but we're getting a little bit more of these people who aren't showing up for things like this. Where's this, we're, just for our own knowledge here, are these block party requests filled out at the clerk's office initially?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. I'm sorry. They come into the clerk's office and they come through the council office.
Okay, are we, I mean, I take it there is an established practice of letting them know when the city council meeting this would be heard?
They are told, and I know Sarah does let people know that they are, should be here. I know, for example, the woman, the meeting before, she had called and we had talked to her, Lori had talked to her too, as well as Sarah had, about the importance of being here tonight.
Okay, so we'll put it on regular.
Thank you. All right, that'll be put on approving for the regular. The second is a block party request from Jennifer Thomas with a band and DJ to be held, to be held Saturday, August 7, 2021, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Dooley Park on Harrison between Meadowlark and Linden with a rain date of Saturday, August 14, 2021. Good evening.
Hello. I can confirm, I got the email. It did say to be here.
Good to know.
My name is Jennifer Thomas. I'm at 14054 Sunbury, and that is obviously Livonia, 48154. We are asking for permission to do a community block party in Compton Village at Dooley Park. It's not really a block, it's the park, but we more recently just had the food truck rallies begin in our neighborhood, and they've been hugely successful. And myself and a couple neighbors were looking to do an actual block party, but then, once we saw the magnitude of how many people showed up and how awesome this was, that's when the idea kind of came into fruition, to make this a little bit bigger for the whole community. And we definitely need it after the last year that we've had. And we just think it would be an awesome community event. We are looking at, we are securing a stage for DJ, and we have like a kids' band, and then a couple other little bands, bounce houses. It's going to be a really cool thing, and you guys are all welcome to come join. Yes.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Now, this, this one is particularly special for me because, as council's probably sick of hearing, I spent 11 years leading the County Village Civic Association and leading exactly this type of stuff. And that was a great organization that had a lot of great things going, that due to a number of reasons has, has not kept up the same level of activity. And my eyes just absolutely lit up, Jennifer, when I saw your name on the agenda tonight and what you were trying to do, because this is just a continuation, a restart really, of a really great tradition in that neighborhood. And I just think it's huge for that neighborhood, and those types of activities and organizations are huge for our city. So, I got the chance to meet the Thomases during the intermission here and look forward to hopefully some more conversations, some sharing of lessons learned. But I just, I wish you all the best, and I'm going to mark my calendar and try to be there, come see some of my old friends.
Thank you.
I'll offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you. Well, congratulations almost. And what I wanted to ask you is, this is your first one, right?
Correct. It is our first. We're calling it our first annual. We would like to make this a yearly thing.
That's super. Good, good. That's a real active community down there and with Councilman Barr in the past and others in that area. They all went to Bentley, of course. And so it's a wonderful area. So, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. We have, we have really good community buy-in. We've, we have a Facebook group. We have the Compton Village Facebook group. It's in there. And then we created an additional group that is kind of for the planning and whatnot.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jolly?
Madam President, there is a request on the application for a no veto letter. The date for this is August 7, 2021.
We got a late start.
I'll just make a note that, along with the approving, that we will request a non-veto letter from the administration as well.
All right. Thank you for calling that to our attention. Councilmember Jolly, appreciate that. Councilmember Donavich?
Madam President, would Councilmember Barr be open to admitting his resolution to include Council President McIntyre on the bounce house? Just a joke.
No, he's not. No required participation of the Council President on the bounce house. But thank you for asking.
Good idea.
All right. Sometimes on items like this, we allow ourselves to have just a little bit of fun, Jennifer.
That's great. You guys should come out and have fun.
Well, I think you heard a lot of enthusiasm, and I think we will certainly all try to be there.
Awesome. Thank you.
And thank you for the work and stepping up to do this. And it is a lot of work. Even if there's enthusiasm, it's still a lot of work and a lot of planning. And as I think, I don't know if you heard the earlier meeting, we just, we thank people for any engagement they have with the community, because that's what makes a great community, is citizen engagement. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Good luck. And so it's on the, it's on the consent, so you don't have to come back to the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Item number three is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Robert Race, and I hope that's the correct pronunciation. Or is it Reyes?
Good evening. My name is Robert Race. Address 39499 Northwind Court, Northfield, Michigan. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus and a Bentley Bulldog.
I knew Laura would like that.
Yeah, like, great.
Got one vote.
This is our fourth year that we're having this car show. We were shut out last year with COVID, but we're here before the council to get a waiver of the noise ordinance so that we can have a DJ. The show runs from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 in the afternoon on Saturday, August 7. All are welcome.
Madam President, I am also a Dooley Knights of Columbus, and Mr. Race and his, his partners in crime over at St. Clet are putting on a good show here on an almost annual basis. There haven't been any problems from any neighbors or anything like that, and it's for a good cause. So I'm happy to offer an approving for the consent agenda. I'll note in terms of community, Mr. Race and his wife opened their house to a group of probably obnoxious Ladywood girls and Catholic Central guys for most of my high school experience. So he deserves a commendation for that and a thank you as well. So.
And I didn't pay Jim off to say that, you know.
No, he hasn't found the stuff that I broke yet, though, to be honest with you.
So are you offering that?
I did.
Did you say for the consent?
Yes.
Sorry, I got so caught up in the story. It's on the consent agenda, Mr. Race, and we would be happy afterwards to talk to you about any stories you have, incriminating ones about Mr. Jolly, so.
I think there's a statute of limitations.
That's probably true. All right, so you don't have to come back and.
Okay.
All right. So, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy, and thank you again for what your organization does for our community.
Go Bentley.
Yeah, that's great. Go Bentley.
All right. Item number four is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Ian Edgar and Gail Wilcox from Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop to host a car show with the DJ in the parking lot of the business located at 19215 Merriman Road on Saturday, August 28, 2021, from 8:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. with a rain date of either Saturday, September 4, or Saturday, September 11, 2021. Good evening.
Good evening.
And could you give us your name, please?
Um, my name is Ian Edgar. I represent Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop here in Livonia. And we're located at 19215 Merriman Road in Livonia, Michigan. We're, we're located at 7 Mile and Merriman.
Yep. And you're going to have a big event on Saturday, August 28. Is that correct?
Yep. We're, we're going to be having a car show on August 28.
Okay. And what time?
Um, 11 to 2, 2:30-ish, thereabouts.
Okay. This, our notes say 8:30 to 4, and I kind of wondered about that timing. That didn't.
Yeah, um, we, we put, we put down 8:30 to 4.
Okay.
Um, just, just because we didn't really have an official time yet.
Okay.
Um, and so we, we decided to put that down, and then I got clarification from, from Gail a little while later.
All right, so you just wanted to make sure you, you had the approval for the entire time you needed.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that, that was a good plan. All right. And in prison, Council? Councilmember White?
I'd be happy to offer approving on consent if there's no objection. I think this will be a great event.
Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to give you guys a shout out because of all the awesome work you guys do in the community. And the coffee and all the food that you guys have is top-notch. I love stopping in. And then, I think, if I'm not mistaken, do you guys have anything going on this Thursday from 5 to 8?
Um, yeah, we're having a social event on Thursday.
Just to celebrate the coffee shop.
Uh, just, just to celebrate the coffee shop.
I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that for all the viewers out there and anybody in the audience that they knew Thursday, July 15, I'm reading it here, from 5 to 8, you'll have evenings of music, games, and food. Free to attend. So, if everybody out there has something to do, feel free to drop by, correct?
Exactly.
All right.
All right.
Um, just so you guys know, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was formed in 2018. And we were started by a group of families, caregivers, and advocates of people with developmental disabilities. And our work is funded through private donations and grants. We are not affiliated with any federal or state entities.
Good.
And also, our work is also funded through, through these fundraisers that we do periodically.
All right. And I don't know if you said it, Ian, but what's, what's your motto? I love your, your motto. You are.
We are good and strong.
Exactly. And that's about your coffee and your people, right?
Exactly.
All right. And I'd just like to give a little, another little plug. The business that I work for, we did a box lunch day a few weeks ago, and it was wonderful. We ordered box lunches from you guys, and it was just great. Everybody loved their lunches, and we all, we all just really enjoyed that.
Awesome. Good to hear.
You guys did a great job on those sandwiches. So, thank you for everything you do. You did a wonderful job presenting tonight. And this is on consent, so you don't have to come back, but you're always welcome to come back. And we encourage you to come back anytime there's news about Anastasia and Katie's or your activities that you'd like to share with us and with the city.
Um, I think that's about it.
Okay, but, but anytime you'd like to come back, you're welcome to come back.
We actually have a couple of packets of information about the nonprofit that.
Okay.
Runs Anastasia and Katie's. Uh, can, can my mom pass those out to you?
Certainly. You know what? Why don't we, why don't, we're going to ask your mom, Gail, if she would give those to Sarah, who's the manager of the city council office. And Sarah will make sure that the city council and that other people in the city get the information. And I'm going to ask you one more question. I didn't think you looked like Gail.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Andrew, it's nice to have you here with us tonight. And I was confused because I didn't think you looked like Gail, but I thought, well, maybe I'm confused. So I'm the one, Ian, that's confused here tonight. But one other thing, do you want to tell us the date of your golf outing?
Um, August 16.
Okay, and that's going to be here in Livonia?
Uh, yeah, it's going to be at Idlewild Golf Course.
Yep. And people can find the information, I know, on the My Work Matters website.
Yep, exactly.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you to your mom. It's nice meeting both of you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Also, come see me on, on Friday mornings.
All right.
I work from 7:30 to about 11 o'clock.
Okay, very good. Well, we will get in there on a Friday to see you, but thank you very much for coming. And come anytime you have things to share with us about Anastasia and Katie's.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Great job, Ian. Very nice job.
Thank you.
I think he should run for city council. He's an energetic guy.
Excellent. All right. Item number five is a request to maintain membership in Oakland County Courts and Law Enforcement Management System, Management Information System, also known as CLEMIS. This comes to us from the Division of Police. As this system serves as a technical link between member agencies to promote communication and the sharing of criminal justice information. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. This item before you is a request for your authorization to really renew the contract, existing contract that we have with CLEMIS. As you mentioned, from the regular meeting, with item that was before you, CLEMIS has played a role in the City of Livonia for a number of years, and we work jointly with the court, 16th District Court, along with the fire department as well, as using the suite of services that CLEMIS provides. A quick note on some of those is the CAD, the computer aided dispatch, the mobile data computers, access to the lien, electronic citations, crash reports, evidence and property management, the list goes on. And we've had, we also have a seat at the table for voting with the CLEMIS Committee as a Wayne County rep. And Livonia has that initially going into it, as well as, because we were a strategic partner with them at the beginning of this, with a catastrophic backup. Things have modified over the years, and that necessity has, has waned. But Livonia remains at, at the table with a vote on various policy issues that CLEMIS has, debate or discussing or debating whether we, we go down a path of adding or subtracting other services to the CLEMIS program overall. It's been a great group. The, we, we budget annually funds to, to continue with that subscription. We have that going forward, again, with your approval with this contract. The contract has been submitted to the law department, has been vetted by the legal analysts, and have found no issues with that. So I'm before you asking your support and approval to reenter into this agreement and then continue with the, the payment of the annual dues as dictated in the request.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. This is, as the chief has stated, an absolutely crucial piece of information and infrastructure for the police department and the 16th District Court. I'm happy to offer an approval for the consent agenda. Yeah, I can't imagine how law enforcement would work at this point without a system like this, so.
It is very comprehensive enough to take up more time. It is the largest in the state. And with, with technology being what it is today, it would be cost prohibitive for us to replicate what we're, we're doing outside of CLEMIS.
All right. One other thing, Chief. I don't know if you were listening to the earlier meeting, but the issue about looking into the ability, and, and we, we know that it's complicated, but to give, if there's a way that ordinance can be given some limited access to CLEMIS, but we know it's complicated. I didn't know if you heard the previous conversation.
Yes, I was there, and I am aware of that. And the, the issue really isn't so much the CLEMIS end, it's the hardware and the cost of that. So we, we have to get laptops and printers and all these things, and then get access into the system, the, the mobile data link, all of those things. And we just kind of been weighing that out on, again, the cost effectiveness of it. So we've been writing paper tickets and then have to import those, and, but we're, we're addressing it.
Thank you very much. We, we know you are, and I just, I didn't know if you were here for that part of the meeting, but thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
All right. You don't have to come back, but you're always welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yes, which part? All right. Item number six is a request for approval for the Senior Alliance 2022 Annual Implementation Plan, known as the AIP. This comes to us usually from Jason Machewski. The Chief Information Planning Officer is required by the Aging and Adult Services Agency, also known as ASA, to be submitted to the State Commission on Services to Aging. Good evening, Ms. Isaacson.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Senior Alliance to request approval of their fiscal year 2022 Annual Implementation Plan, which outlines the activities the agency is pursuing to achieve its goals in providing services to senior citizens, which includes the City of Livonia. A couple of their programs that they do assist with our senior residents are the Nutrition and Food Assistance Programs, Holiday Meals, Care Management and Case Coordination, Medicare and Medicaid Assistance, Long-Term Care, Adult Daycare, Legal Assistance, just to name a few.
Council, Councilmember Toy?
I'll offer an approving. This has been longstanding with this organization. They do wonderful work, and I'm just disappointed when you get to see Jason, because he was an intern out of the council office many years ago with me, and he's just a talented person. Not that you aren't, but, you know.
I intend to come tonight.
I know. Now he's a father of many. Well, wait a minute, kids. Anyhow.
Something. All right.
Something.
I'd just like to add, I know that everyone's got a lot of things to read, but if you haven't had a chance to look at the, the AIP, it's pretty amazing, and it lays out the many, many things that the Senior Alliance does. All, I can't think of one program that doesn't benefit somebody in the city, so. And a lot of work goes into that. It's, it's a required state filing, but it's more than just a performa. It really does outline the, and give you a sense of the scope of the services and the, the programs that are provided. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Was that, that was offered for consent?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Item number seven, tax rate request for the Plymouth Road Development Authority for the 2021 tax year. This comes to us from the Office of City Clerk, Forwarding Communication, dated May 17, 2021, from Michael T. Slater, Treasurer, setting forth the tax rate to be levied, and requesting it be collected as part of the summer tax collection.
Madam President?
Councilmember Barr?
Housekeeping item, basically. It's a pass-through for us. I'll offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection. And I also ask, I don't know, can we legally handle these next seven or eight items together?
They're all, they, they could all just be receiving files, because they're just pass-through items. We, you couldn't veto them if you wanted to.
So, do we need, because if they're receiving files, can they be grouped together, or does everyone need to be handled?
They can be grouped together, as far as I'm concerned, because there is no vote on it that the council.
All right, then I'm going to present, I'm going to go ahead and present items number eight through.
14.
14, which are all receive and file tax requests. Again, as the city attorney said, pass-throughs, from, pass-throughs to the city as a, one item to be received and filed for the.
Information.
What did I say? Well, we, we already did seven. So, eight through, eight through 14.
Support.
Can I ask a question?
Please do. They're just receiving and filing.
Because of this. To Mr. Burner, because these are receive and file, and traditionally we have had them listed as agenda items on the agenda, is it possible that we could just have them as receive and files, not listed as agenda items? Because at this point, with what? Well, no, I'm, for, for the future clarification here, with, with what she's doing, it would make sense that we would not have to have them on the consent agenda, and thus.
I will be happy to, to research the issue on it. We won't hopefully see it again until next year, so give us plenty of time to do that. But yeah, like you said, they are just receiving files, because there's nothing we can do. Those are set by other agencies, and we just pass them along and collect for them. So, yes, I, I agree that probably is the case, but I'd rather research and have. But I'd rather research and have the real answer for you.
So be treated like reports from the mayor and other city officials like we do with the finance reports, if possible, right?
Right.
As a receiving file.
But just for, just for, I'm sorry, just for a purely clerical perspective here, because you're running the meeting, should somebody else offer those for consent just so they're listed on the consent agenda? Or how are we going forward with this?
They're, they're just a receiving file. They don't even have to be offered by anybody.
She can do that.
I understand that, but. Okay. But they will be listed on the consent agenda?
No, they'll just be a receiving file. They're just going to be, if you, if you want to put them on the consent agenda, you can and vote on it. But there is no need to have it on there because whether it's on, whether you vote for it or against it, it's going to be collected. It's a tax that's going to be collected.
I appreciate all of this, and I'm not trying, I'm really not trying to be difficult here, though. This is a study meeting, so we can't really do anything. We can't even formally receive and file things during a study meeting.
That is true.
Madam President?
Council? Madam President Barr?
If I understand what, if I understand what Mr. Bernier is saying, I think it's like what you said, like we often have at the top of an agenda, reports from the mayor administration. I think it could just be listed there and not listed. I mean, you're right, it needs to go on the regular agenda. Just, but it wouldn't necessarily have to go as a part of the consent. And Councilman Jolly is right, this is a study meeting. It's a learning opportunity for all of us here, so.
So I would suggest we just put it, if the council wants, we can just put it on consent for this time. And by next year, hopefully, we can just do a receiving file.
I'll offer him all for consent if there's no objection.
All right. Is there any objections pointing on consent?
No.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Item number 15 is a request to approve the establishment of improvement bonds. This comes to us from the Engineering Division. To assure the installation of public improvements at Grand Reserve Site Condominium, formerly Roma Court, located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Newburgh Road and Hicks Road, 37855 Linden Avenue, formerly Webster Elementary School site in the southeast quarter of Section 19. This was council resolution 87-21. Mr. Zlonsik?
Good evening, Madam President, city council members. Again, this is just a formal housekeeping issue. We collect improvement bonds, general improvement bond, sidewalk bond, grading and soil erosion control bond, entrance markers and landscaping bond, monuments and markers bond, and as-sboat drawings bonds. As we move forward with the construction of the development, as the items are approved and accepted, we'll come back to city council to have those bonds released. Again, it protects the city. And us, case developer, for some reason, is unable to complete that. Or there are some outstanding issues. We can address those with the bond money that we've held. And again, protecting the residents that may reside there, or again, the city to complete those items. If you have to answer any questions, you have any. And again, appreciate your efforts and the new developments that are coming on in the city of Livonia. There's three of them. And these are, I'll talk about the next one. There's two of them onboard. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zlonsik. Council?
Madam President, I'll, I'll offer that for an approving for consent. But I do have a question real quick. Because these aren't bonds, are we always accepting these as cash bonds? Or are we accepting surety bonds? Or when we say bonds, what exactly are we taking from?
So we're talking cash bonds. So if you look at the attachment, whatever, these are cash bonds that are due itself. Typically, the problem with surety bonds is that they expire within a year. And the banks and us trying to collect those is very difficult. So in order for the developments to occur, we want, we want to make sure that there's cash bonds. Again, with the surety bonds, in the past practices, we've had people walk and issues with that. So it protects the city. I've, since I've been here, I've taken cash bonds for all the recent developments itself. And again, it protects the city in the long, long run.
Is that the standard practice for all, for all communities? I mean, I think it's great. That's a great approach to take. But is, is that how other communities are doing it as well?
I'd have to check. You know, it depends on, you know, each practice, whatever. So I think some, some may take surety, some may take cash. But I believe, again, you know, when I came onboard here back in 2008, took over areas where a lot of developments were left hanging to be fixed, you know, the bonds came in handy to get that work done, whether paving the roads or whatever else. And if surety bond would have been expired by then from that bank or wherever entity they got it from, the developer got it from, or they made not even business anymore. So cash, cash for us is very key to make sure that we protect the residents that actually reside there. And may, if a developer walks or something, God forbid, happen to that development, we can pick up those pieces and make sure the residents are put back whole.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. You good with that? Okay. Item number 16 is a request to approve the establishment of improvement bonds. This comes to us from the Engineering Division to assure the installation of public improvements at Linden Site Park Condominium, formerly Adams Park, located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Inkster Road and Middle Belt Road, 28201 Linden Avenue, formerly Adams Elementary School site in the southeast quarter of Section 24, council resolution 11-21.
Just Windmill Homes is developing that property over there. Stuart, Sharon Stewart-Michelson is developing that area and just looking for improvement bonds. Again, to protect us for, I think there's 38 homes, 39 homes going in that location. And just to help protect the city and look forward to working with these folks on the new development that's occurring. And as you know, there's a block party started at Dooley Park there. So just to be careful, there will be some development going on, hopefully not on Saturday. And hopefully, the, the area will obviously be contained with the silt fence and soil erosion measures that are there. But just want to make sure the people that came earlier with the Dooley Park, you know, party, that there is construction going to go north of that location, obviously with the developments occurring at this location. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zlonsik.
Good, Madam President. I, just, this is standard development. And to answer Councilman Jolly's question, at least for a couple of the municipalities I've had, the cash is the gold standard to have on file. I, I don't know of any other communities that do that. But I'll offer an approving for consent. There's no objections.
All right. Any objections? Seeing none. Councilmember Toy?
Can I ask Mr. Zlonsik a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Zlonsik, could you announce about Five Mile being closed for us? Because a lot of people aren't aware of that.
As you all know, I-275 project, it's called I-275 Revive by MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, is working on the Five Mile Bridge, which will be extended to allow for pedestrians. They are closing it for approximately 10 weeks, starting today, July 12th. There's a message board on either side of the expressways letting people know that the bridge is closed to have construction work done for the next 10 weeks. So people are advised to go up Newburgh Road. North on Newburgh Road, head west off Six Mile and head south down to Hagerty. So that's the detour route. It is posted. And look forward to completing that within 10 weeks. And then they go up to Six Mile Road. That'll be shut down partially for one-way traffic for approximately eight weeks. So watch out for the bridge work at Six Mile and Five Mile. But Five Mile was closed officially today for approximately 12, 10, 10 weeks to do the work and widening the bridge.
So how would you get, if I may ask you, to the service drive at Schoolcraft if you're going to, like, the gas station or my physical therapy is on the other side? What's the best route to take on that?
Just go up, you can go Hagerty to Six Mile down. Or if you're going to Schoolcraft, you have to go west up, up to Newburgh, you know.
Okay.
You know, east, east on Schoolcraft Road, come up Newburgh, and then come back around. You know, they got the mobile gas station there, that Krogers, things of that nature. I would just go south if you had to. Also, on Hagerty, come back around if you wanted to. But Six Mile is a closer, closer detour.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that announcement. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Anyone from the audience? All right. We still have, we have someone from the audience coming, audience communication.
Hi.
Good evening.
Forgive my tardiness. I am here for a block party approval.
Oh, okay. Which person are you?
Maggie McGrane on Rayburn Street.
Okay. I, I'm going to, if the council.
We, we haven't adjourned yet, so we can revisit that.
Well, I was just going to.
Say that.
As a courtesy, ask the rest of the council if no one objected. If we could, we could circle back to item number one, new business. Good evening.
Thank you.
And this is the block party to be held Saturday, August 21st, 2021, from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Rayburn Street between Levan and Williams with no rain date requested.
Correct.
All right. Anything you wanted to tell us about the block party?
Hopefully, it's fun.
All right. Is this?
Perfect.
So moved.
Is this an annual, is this an annual party?
Yeah, like five years, I think, now.
Wonderful.
Minus last year.
Wonderful. All right.
Madam President, I offered that for the regular meeting earlier. I'll change that to a consent now that she's shown up.
All right. So it goes on the consent agenda. And thank you for coming. And everybody, life's busy. And so we appreciate that you took the time to come tonight. And so you don't have to come back on the next meeting. All right? Thank you, and enjoy your block party. Good luck. All right. Is anyone else, anyone else from the audience? I think I can safely say no. All right. And we are adjourned as of 9:00.
Woo!